November 1st, would you please join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is to approve the order of the agenda. It has been requested by the submitter, Mr. John Shockley, that item number five, item number five in the regular agenda be removed from tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve with that change.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdevig. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the order of the agenda with the exception of a change of item number five in the regular agenda being removed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item D is the approval of the minutes of October 18th, 2021. They have been distributed. They are on pages three through four. Move to approve. Thank you. Commissioner Simmons, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner George seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of October 18th, 2021 as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E is the building permits. They have been distributed. They are in the packet, pages five through seven.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner George, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the building permits as distributed, pages five through seven. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next order of business is the consent agenda. We have items A through G.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson, is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdevig seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as distributed, items A through G. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now into the regular agenda. Item number one is a public hearing and first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment to 4-434 Downtown Mixed Use District, Lisa Sankey. Ms. Sankey, city planner, city of West Fargo, pages 154 through 159.
Thank you, President Dartis and commissioners. When the downtown mixed use district was adopted by the city commission on January 6th, 2020, a section regarding setbacks for new construction of multi-use buildings adjacent to residential properties was presented and included in the second reading. However, it was not published in the text. The proposed amendment would add this to the current ordinance under section 4-434.4.2B. The proposed amendment states that a minimum side yard or rear yard setback of 20 feet for each additional floor above 35 feet is required where new construction is adjacent to one and two family dwelling districts. This is a public hearing. I'm available to answer any questions, and we're also asking for first reading on this.
Thank you, Ms. Sankey. Are there questions? Planning and zoning? No?
I'm sorry.
Please, Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you. Lisa, when we did this one, did we have any input from, I guess, the businesses as far as developers, all that type of stuff? Do they give us any input into, you know, their expertise?
I'll defer to Tim and see if he remembers.
Mr. Tim Solberg, Assistant City Administrator, city of West Fargo.
Thank you. Acting planning director as well at the moment.
Acting planning director as well. My apologies.
I had sent up Lisa, and she's very familiar with this ordinance. This was actually something, when it was adopted, that we went through with the developers at the time. We worked with Cheyenne Plaza and Pioneer Place as well. So they were aware that that was there. There are areas within there that have single-family dwellings but are zoned R3, like multifamily. So it doesn't affect those specific properties. It's where you got a single-family dwelling zoned R1, so intended to be R1 for, until you guys would change that, that that's where it would be affecting, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Mr. Solberg's business card now is an eight and a half by 11 sheet of paper. Additional questions, Commissioner? All right. At this time, we will close the regular agenda, and we move into the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address this issue? Again, we are in zoning ordinance amendment 4-434 Downtown Mixed Use District, first reading and a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? Final call for anybody that would like to speak to this item. Public hearing is closed, and we're back into the regular agenda. Commissioners? Any additional questions, thoughts, comments?
I'll move you approve first reading.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. It's been moved. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdevig seconds. Been moved and seconded to accept the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment to 4-434 Downtown Mixed Use District as presented by Ms. Sankey of planning and zoning. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two is a public hearing and a first reading of a zoning ordinance amendment to sections 4-451.6, automobile parking space required. Ms. Sankey, planning and zoning.
Thank you, President Dartis and commissioners. When the review for parking for office uses in recent, during the review for parking for office uses in recent years, it was determined that the parking for required office uses and medical uses may not necessarily reflect national standards or parking need and are higher than our neighboring communities and typically higher than demand. Currently, general office uses are required one space per 200 square feet of gross floor area with exceptions for beauty and barber shops of two spaces per operator plus one employee on the largest shift. And for medical offices and clinics, five spaces per doctor plus one space per employee on the largest shift. Staff proposes the following zoning ordinance amendment to 4-451.6, automobile parking space required for office uses. General office uses, one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area. And for medical uses and clinics, one space per 200 square feet of gross floor area. And removing the section regarding beauty and barber shops from the office uses. This is a public hearing and first reading. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sankey. Any questions? Mr. Jurdevig?
So this, this will, with this change, we will be aligned with what Fargo currently requires?
I believe so in some of our other communities.
That is correct. Additional questions? Commissioner George?
Just a quick question. So with this, you're reducing the amount of parking? Are we showing that we have too much parking available? Is that what we're seeing?
Compared to the area and for office uses, there's quite a bit of available parking within, in the office use area. So again, it's reflecting national standards. It's reflecting what some of the requests have been in recent years. And this is only for the office park section where we're keeping the retail area and all the other parking ordinance sections the same.
Okay. But still, it won't put a hardship, shouldn't put a hardship on parking?
No.
Additional questions? All right, thank you. At this time, we close the regular agenda, and again, we go into a public hearing. The public hearing is on the zoning ordinance amendment to sections 4-451.6, automobile parking space requirements. As presented by Ms. Sankey of the city planner, it is in pages 160 to 170 in the packet. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this item? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this item? Again, we are on item number two of the regular agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. We're back in discussion. Commissioners?
Make the motion to approve the parking amendment?
Thank you, Commissioner Simmons. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner, excuse me. Commissioner George seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of the zoning ordinance amendment to sections 4-451.6, automobile parking space requirements as presented by planning and zoning. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We are now on regular agenda item number three. This is the second reading and the final approval of the proposed Willow Creek second subdivision plat and rezone from agricultural to real rural estate district, better known as R-1E, in the auditor's lot five of the southeast corridor of section 10. Mr. Malachi Peterson, city planner, city of West Fargo, is it in pages 171 to 180 in your packet?
Thank you, Mr. Commission President and commissioners. The applicant has submitted an application for a rezone in a preliminary plat for property located in the city's extraterritorial area, which is about one and a half miles to the west of current West Fargo city limits. The applicant owns an unplanted parcel south of the Willow Creek subdivision and is proposing to subdivide and rezone the property to R-1E, single-family dwellings, to construct a single-family dwelling. The area is within a special flood hazard area, and according to the flood hazard layer firm map, the majority of the property the applicant intends to build on is located in flood zone X. Any development will be required to meet all applicable federal, state, and local regulations, which may have changed since the existing home was constructed. Attached to your packets, you can find this firm map for the location along with the preliminary flood map for reference. The property is located east of the current alignment and proposed Fargo Moorhead flood diversion, which is depicted in pink in the image on the right, which can also be found in your packets. There has been concerns noted previously by the Fargo-Cass Public Health with regard to onsite septic systems being built on smaller lots. The addition of fill is required to build homes sometimes does not leave adequate undisturbed soil for placement of a proper drain field. The county sanitarian has been contacted by both the applicant and the city, and has indicated a minimum of one acre is required for onsite septic systems, which the applicant appears to meet that requirement. Public land dedication is required pursuant to 4-0407 of the city ordinances. Given that the majority of the area will remain undeveloped, staff would consider for, offer for consideration the ability to defer the public land dedication or fee in lieu to which time that the property is either resubdivided or is further developed upon. It would be staff's recommendation that this deferral be part of an agreement recorded against each lot in the subdivision in a subdivision agreement which has already been drafted by the city attorney. Due to the size of the lot, rezoning to R-1E could potentially allow for further development of the property into additional single-family homes sometime in the future. The city currently has no utilities in this area, nor does it provide any services. Current and future owners would need to provide utilities at this location, including but not limited to water and septic. The size of the lots proposed is 3.29 acres. Well, I believe that information might currently be out of date. So there's currently three lots being proposed. One of the lots is from the Water Resource District, which they're in the process of acquiring via purchase. If the lots are rezoned, there is potential for further subdivision of the land, which could be up to 18 lots based on area size. The suburban restricted growth sector includes areas between the current proposed diversion that may have new development potential should the new diversion be built. The G1 area identifies significant tracts of land that are currently rural but where directed and well-planned new development could occur around the identified potential future mixed use and employment centers. The proposed project is not currently part of a directed development effort. Property owners within 150 feet and applicable city agencies and departments, including Reed Township officials, Cass County Planning, and the Cass County Sanitarian were notified. We did not receive any compliments. The suburban restricted growth sector includes areas between the current proposed diversion. City staff finds that this proposed development would be consistent with comprehensive plan and other applicable city plans and ordinances. Its planning is the recommendation from staff that the city, if the city approves the subdivision, that a subdivision agreement signed and recorded against the property, which would prevent further subdivision of the lots until such time that the owner submits a detailed area plan showing how utilities would be provided, and that that plan is reviewed by the city of West Fargo. Two, a public land dedication deferral is recorded against each lot within the subdivision. Three, any building permits should follow the preliminary flood map, which will require percent allowable fill on any development. Four, any concerns from Fargo-Cass Public Health with regard to onsite septic system on the newly proposed lot is addressed and are reviewed by the applicant prior to consideration of final plat. Five, that the applicant is to meet all federal, state, and local requirements for improvements to the site and structures. Six, land dedication fee in lieu or agreement for deferral be approved by the city commission. Seven, an attorney titled opinion is received. Eight, a drainage plan is approved by the city engineer. Nine, the final plat is received with any necessary easements. Ten, a certificate is showed receiving that taxes are current. Planning and zoning recommended approval after July 13th, 2021 meeting. We then sort of held on to this while the Water Resource District went through some additional information on their end regarding the plat. At their August 2nd, 2021 meeting, the city commission tabled the item. At the August 16th and September 7th, 2021 meetings, the city commission continued to table the item while staff worked with the applicant on right-of-way issues due to the requirement of right-of-way by the Cass County Joint Water Resource District. At their September 20th, 2021 meeting, the city commission approved the first reading of this item, and the Cass County Joint Water Resource District then reviewed and approved the item after October 14th, 2021 meeting. I'm here for any questions, and I believe the applicant is also here in case you have any questions as well. This is not a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Questions? Commissioners? Commissioner George?
I just have a quick one, and this has probably been addressed, but just, I just want a re-clarification. So where the FM diversion is proposed to hit that corner, that was the southwest corner? That was the problem, area, right?
So, correct. So the Water Resource District was currently in the process of acquiring by eminent domain a portion of the property which is down in this southwestern corner there. And then that's what led to some of those questions. They were just worried about assessments and sort of West Fargo's future plans for the area.
Can you just clarify the outcome then of what was decided then with that corner as far as how that works?
Yep. So the corner is going to be platted as a separate lot. That lot will be owned by the Water Resource District. And the applicant will have the other two lots. There was some discussion on whether or not to create a separate lot for a right-of-way that they had over here on this corner. But we're requiring 70 feet, five-foot right-of-way, which is standard practice. And so they weren't worried then about making that into a separate lot because anything that's in our right-of-way would already fall within, then they'd be able to operate or do whatever they needed to do within that area.
Okay. So even though we're rezoning it for residential, I mean, that lot really isn't...
Yeah, there's no plans for that lot to develop into anything. From my understanding, the Water Resource District is just going to keep that as is.
Okay. So no home is accidentally going to be built on that? That's got to be ripped up in five years.
Correct, yep. Yes, yeah. So the lot, the lots that's being platted in the southwest corner there, that's not going to be zoned for the R-1E. So that's going to be left as agricultural, ag, which it currently is. The rest of it will be zoned R-1E. Sorry about that.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. Again, we're, final approval, second reading of the proposed Willow Creek's second subdivision plat and rezoning.
I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdevig. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Olson seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the second reading and final approval of the proposed Willow Creek second subdivision plat and rezone from agriculture to rural estate district in auditor's lot five of the southeast corner of section 10. Is there any further discussion? White ad, it's in pages 171 to 180. Any additional questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Item number four is a right-of-way encroachment request, Fargo Packing and Sausage Company. Please step to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Roger Remenge, 625 Willow Court, Horace.
Welcome.
Hello. Yeah, I'm looking to put a grease interceptor on the west side of my building. But to do that, I have to have an encroachment from the city. Roughly from my building to the road, the edge of the road is 19 feet. So it's two feet, it would be placed two feet out from my building, and it's six feet wide, so I'd still leave 11 feet from the end of the thing to the road in case something was going to come up with sewage or something like that, or sanitary water down the road. But I have a, I have a grease, I guess what you'd call it, a skimmer down my basement I got to replace. And I'm just looking at making it more modern, and it'd be a concrete grease interceptor that then we just pump out. Because now we have to put them in barrels and in pails and garbage bags, and we take them up and throw them in the trash. And it's usually 35 to, I would say 35 to 50 gallons a day. We do that so it doesn't get into the sewage system. So that's what I was trying to do is, you know, improve it for a lot better. It'd be better for the city, better for me, you know? So, but I just need, because I don't have room for me to do it, if I was going to use my product, I'd have to go all the way, and it wouldn't be feasible. It wouldn't even be feasible to do that because of where the sewer lines and stuff are.
Thank you, sir. Roger presented this in front of the review committee, of which I'm a part of. The 30 to 35 pails per day goes into the garbage, and then it gets hauled off. This is hauled up literally in pails. I think that this is a great addition because now he can have his contractor come out and actually pump this out. And so there's, that's not going to the landfill and to the garbage. They, the recommendation of the review committee was to support this issue. Mr. Solberg, do you have something additional, please?
Sorry, but I just wanted to clarify for the commission, too, what we were asking Roger to do was ask for the request of the city commission, and then we would have the city attorney write that encroachment agreement. Roger, as the applicant, would cover those fees to write that encroachment agreement. It is underneath his on-street parking. That on-street parking is within the right-of-way, so we want to cover some of our liabilities there and ensure that if he moves or somebody else buys the company someday, that they know that that's there and that that would be their responsibility to take care of it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Solberg. Of course, the encroachment agreement will address all of those issues should this have to be moved or whatever, for whatever reason. Questions, Mr. Simmons?
Sure, probably more for John. John, if we approve something like this, I'm assuming if we have to get into that area, it would be in there, you'd have to dig it up or whatever? And you're willing to do that? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah. I mean, if we're going to have to, I guess if we have to dig it up, we have to dig it up for some reason.
For some odd reason.
Then I'd have to, you know, I'd have to get back into, you know, putting a grease skimmer downstairs in my basement again. But, you know, like I said, if they had problems, I felt, you know, I addressed that 11 feet they kind of thought was enough area from the road if they had to put any sanitary, because everything right now, it's so high up there, everything just flows down.
I'm just concerned with the encroachment, that's all. I'm just concerned with the property that we could get back down there again.
We'll cover it, yeah.
So, okay.
Additional questions? Roger? Thank you, sir. Commissioners?
I'll make the motion to have our attorney work on a easement agreement or whatever.
Encroachment agreement?
Encroachment agreement.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurdevig. It's been moved and seconded to direct legal counsel to work on a right-of-way encroachment agreement between Fargo Packing and Sausage Company and the city of West Fargo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir. As indicated early in the meeting, item number five has been removed, so we're on item number six, and that's a resolution, resolution setting fine amounts for parking violations. Mr. Shockley, city attorneys, is on page 185 of the packet that has been distributed. Mr. Shockley?
Thank you, Mr. Commission President. This is just a resolution that set the parking fees. We do this from time to time. And just briefly, it would set the parking fine at $20 unless specifically set forth in the resolution. The $30 violation, just for information, a $30 violation for 13604 is if it's a commercial truck that's parking, so it'd be a $30 ticket. The $100 ticket for 13604, too, is when a trailer would dolly down in town, so they detached a tractor, parked it in a residential neighborhood. It's higher fine because that's, residents don't typically like a semi-trailer parked in their neighborhood. And then the final one for 13623 is a fine for handicap parking. So if somebody parks in handicapped or mobility impaired parking, they would receive a $100 parking ticket. Concerningly, answer any questions, but pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Questions for Mr. Shockley? Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. John, are these in line with the, with the centric code, the state centric code now then? Is that kind of where we're going with this, so?
Correct.
Okay.
Additional questions?
I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Jurdevig. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner George, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution setting the fine amounts for parking violations as presented by Mr. John Shockley, city attorney, the city of West Fargo. Page 185 of your packet. Is there any? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Item number seven, Commission Financial Guiding Principles. Tina Fisk, city administrator, city of West Fargo, page 186 of your packet.
Good evening, Commission President Dartis and commissioners. In meeting with our assistant administrator, Tim Solberg, and John Shockley, city attorney, we were discussing getting some guiding principles from you to us so that we can use those as our base for as we're looking for financing of improvement projects, buildings, all of the different things, so that we know what your expectation is when we bring it back forward to you. These are very simple, but they're meant to be that way because then our job is to make sure that we follow these and bring the information back and then lay it out to you that we are following the principles. I sent them out to each of you, and I also laid a set on your, in front of each of your computers. I will read them for the public. The first one is to reduce use of special assessments as a funding source of city infrastructure. The second would be to seek the lowest cost long-term capital through the issuance of bonds, loans, and other debt instruments when available. The third would be utilize the capital improvement sales tax proceeds responsibly to fund projects as set forth in the commission, approved by capital, excuse me, as set forth in the commission approved by the capital improvement plan. Staff will assure that all city policies, financial decisions are consistent with the approved guiding principles. We also did meet with finance director, Jim Larson, to see if he had any other comments or thoughts, and he was okay with them as well.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Mrs. Fisk? Would you like this as an actionable item, Mrs. Fisk?
Yes, please.
Commissioners?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Olson. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the Commission Guiding Principles on Financial Policy for the City Infrastructure and Building. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Make sure I don't skip anything. Item number eight, Cost of Living Adjustment Discussion. Commissioner Dartis, Commissioner Dartis and Mrs. Fisk. Mrs. Fisk, will you please start?
Yes, I will. Thank you, President Dartis and commissioners. A while back, when we were having discussions, we were asked as staff to bring back costs to increase the cost of living adjustment from what we have in the budget. Currently in the budget, we have a 1% cost of living for all employees in there. Inflation is running at 5.4, 6.2. It's, it's just not, it keeps inching its little way up. And so your request was to bring it back for your consideration, what type of increase you would want, what you'd want to move it to, and then you needed to know the costs. So in front of you is a schedule that shows the cost to each specific department, meaning general fund, fire, library, the utility funds, and economic development. If we went from a 1% to a 2%, a 1% to a 3%... If we went from a one percent to a two percent, a one percent to a three percent, and a one percent to four percent. And then beside each item, I have how we would work to create the funding for them as we did not include them in the two thousand twenty-two budget over one percent. We would work to create a budget savings in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two. As you well know, one of the main light items we have is we've not been able to keep staffing up to what was approved. And so we will have an excess of salary, benefit funds, different things like that. But we will also look and make sure that there may be other areas that maybe we've underspent and make sure that we keep our spending down to help account for those costs as we normally would anyway, but then that's kind of what we were thinking of for those. The library, the library board would have to approve any additional funding after you would approve whatever you choose. For the utilities, we've been able to research the funds and the fund balances, and there is adequate funding in those funds for the amount that's listed here. And economic development is paid for through economic development sales tax. The amount is small and it would be able to cover that. So I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Commissioners, questions? Mr. Jirdavich?
So the increase would not be coming out of reserves or, I mean, we would be making up, making it up within the budget?
The, what we're anticipating is we'll have enough savings within the budget for the tax-lebbed funds, the general and fire, to cover the increase that it would cause because this will be a budget amendment for the two thousand twenty-two budget. But if we can create enough savings in twenty-one and then even some more in twenty-two to help offset that, that's our intention.
Additional questions for Mrs. Fisk?
I have one.
Commissioner Olson?
So you've laid out for us a change going from one percent up to two to three to four. And you're saying that within your research, we could do one of those three, all the way from two percent to three percent to four percent, and it would be covered within, well, by savings that we've realized already and can realize in the future?
Correct.
So, I mean, I'm positive on this idea, but I feel like I would be failing as a commissioner not to bring up the fact that, I mean, just, was it six weeks ago? When we approved the budget, there was no room not to increase it to four-point-five mils. I voted against the budget because of that. We couldn't cut that. And now we're saying we could increase salaries by four hundred thousand dollars and find it in the budget. I'm perplexed by that.
If you recall, Commissioner, I raised the point that evening
Yep.
about the possibility that we'd be doing some more research. We've done that research. As Mrs. Fisk has indicated, and I received a lot of this information today, but the cost of living is running anywhere from five-point-two to six-point-four percent, depends on the size of the city and all of those types of things. So the next order of business of doing the research was is that I asked Jenna Wilm, our director of human resources, to share with me how many folks have left us for whatever the reason might be. And to review and to research why they might be leaving, whether it's salary or other job opportunities, transferring to different locations and the like. So, you know, so the research has been done on that. We have, at the present time, there's fourteen job openings in the city of West Fargo that we have not been able to fill. And that was approved for two thousand twenty-one.
Correct.
So those fourteen job openings is revenue that you can count that is, Mrs. Fisk just said, has not been expended, but was budgeted the year before.
Yep.
So those dollars have been saved, if you will, by the city of West Fargo just because of the nature and the climate of what the workforce issues are that our whole region is dealing with. So, you know, when, when we went through the budget, I specifically asked to have this kind of as a placeholder. And we had a consensus with the commission that that was an appropriate thing. And so this is what we're bringing back now. We now have more data that we, because that evening I didn't have any of this data. So what I wanted to bring back to you is saying, okay, when I, when I met with Mrs. Fisk, I said, all right, specifically, can you line item how many dollars have been saved because of us not being able to hire these fourteen positions that we have open? The other thing is, is that there's, you're a former businessman, as I am. And the most difficult thing is, is that when you train people to do their jobs and they're good at what they do, and you have attrition that leaves you because of better opportunity, that's very expensive to retrain and to try and recruit those people. So that's why I left a placeholder back when we went through this.
And I, I agree with everything you said. And I, like I said, I'm not negative on the idea of trying to do something more than we did. I think I'm just making the point that six weeks ago, there wasn't another penny to be squeezed out of the budget, and now we can squeeze another four hundred thousand out of it. And I questioned that at the time because I felt like there was some money there. Now, I guess it's fortuitous that the money is now there and that we approved it because we don't have to spend reserves, but I, it, it's concerning to me that in six weeks, we found four hundred thousand dollars that we couldn't find all summer when we were talking, going through.
A legitimate concern. Commissioner Simmons?
Thank you. First of all, I don't believe we found the four hundred thousand dollars just in the last couple of weeks. Tina's talking about not only this year, but next year. And I'm confident between this year and next year that you will find the money to pay for this. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve the three percent COLA increase.
I have a motion to increase it to three percent COLA. Is there a second? Is there a second? Dartis, seconds.
You beat me to it. You beat me to it.
Okay, all right. Roberts rules the border in a commission-style government, the chair can second and make motions, just for everybody's information, is whether or not I'm on the line. So we have a motion and a second to increase the COLA to a three percent increase for our employees. Discussion, Commissioner?
Clarifying question. Does that motion put the limitation that it is not to be spent out of our reserve funds?
I, I got confidence that Tina's not going to do that. We've told her that. My motion is to just increase the three percent. She's not going to, she knows what she's got to do. I'm okay with that. I'm not going to put her in line. If that, if that's between passing this and not, then I will certainly put it in there.
Motion approves that amendment, too.
Commissioner Jirdavich and other commissioners, just for a heads up, typically what happens is when we have an underspent budget because in this case, we have a large amount of employees that we haven't been able to hire at the right time, whatever, all that money just drops into our general fund reserve balance. And so that's normally where it would land. So what I'm saying is, if you, if this is the way that you want to go, we're able to capture that money and use it for unspent expenses in twenty-one and twenty-two for not being able to hire. There's a lot of expenses that go with hiring, there's training, there's, you know, computers, there's all the things. So those items, they don't go up to where we budgeted because of the fact we haven't been able to hire. Now, I would prefer we had them all hired, but unfortunately, in this climate, this is where we're sitting.
Commissioner George?
That was exactly what I was going to say. It's like, I think you guys were actually talking about different things, and I could tell Tina wanted to clarify that. It's like, this wasn't what we approved in two thousand twenty-two, this was unspent funds in two thousand twenty-one. So I think the difference then will be that we'll see the, maybe the increase in the two thousand twenty-three budget with the higher salaries and going forward.
It's a two-mil hole in the year from now on the budget.
Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Olson?
I'm just, you know, always received is this one little sheet right now. I'm just wondering if you've got extra data there, Mayor?
Received it today. Yes, sir. I'd be happy to share anything I've got with you.
Right, yep, I know you would. I'm just, based on the cost of living increases and all that around the nation, and we're seeing it everywhere, and then knowing what they've, what our neighboring cities and counties have given to their employees over this, I'm just wondering if, I guess, I'm not opposed to the three percent. I'd be more in favor of four percent because of all the factors that you guys have said to keep them here, keep them employed as our people rather than potentially losing them across the border.
Commissioner?
On that note, I mean, if there's data that we, that all five of us have not seen, should we look at talking about this in two weeks and having a chance to look at that?
So this is effective for January one, right?
Correct. Correct.
Not for me, it wouldn't be. I'd be welcome to that. And then if any of you wanted to have, I carry the administrative deal, you're the vice chairman of the administrative budgets and the like. If you want one-on-ones with us, be happy to do that. I'll make sure that these are in your hands immediately following this meeting. So if, if you're, if you're suggesting we table it for another, till the next meeting, I'm fine with that. If we can do the research of, as Commissioner Olson has indicated, that if the four percent is more what I was liking, I mean, it's the five of us that are going to decide this. So the more data that I can put in front of you, the happier I'll be.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, man, it's, the money's obviously there now, so it would just be the impact going forward if we're okay with that.
Right, it'd be the long-term effects. Does it be, yeah?
Certainly.
So how do we do that?
So to do that, we would, I can accept a motion to table this as long as I step back from my second and Commissioner Simmons steps back from his motion. It's, it's fine with me. Commissioner?
I'm not going to step back from my motion. Can I, can I, but I do want to re, I just want to make another motion, so I will step, what I have to do to get out of this motion, to make another motion, what I, what I do there.
Mr. Simmons, please. You, you have the con. Go ahead.
Okay, so I want to, John, do I have to step back from this motion, make a remotion?
We both have.
Yeah, it would be up to the chair since you, if you're going to re, you know.
I second it, and I, I'm amenable to that so that it's, now it's up to you.
Okay, so I want to take away that motion.
Okay.
And I want to make a remotion.
You have the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make a motion to approve a four percent increase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Olson, second. Been moved and seconded to approve a four percent COLA for the employees of the city of West Fargo. Is there any further discussion?
Personally, I would want to see data before I would vote yes to that. So if we're going to have a vote on it tonight, I'll be voting no, that is not necessarily reflective of a vote against four percent, but I just, without, to your point, I've seen one page of information and to commit to three additional mils into the next year's tax levy beyond two thousand twenty-two off of one page of information and a brief discussion, I'm not comfortable with.
I believe we actually have two pages because there's another page in the packet that shows you what the area is doing, what Tina put in there. So there are.
Well, I see a lot of pieces of paper that are being referenced down here that I guess I would see more, more data.
You had that one, too. I believe, I believe that's in your packet, too.
Yeah, I believe you have that one as well. So they're in there.
That's a massive commitment into future tax increases that I would need some data to support. So again, I will vote against that, but I want to be clear, it's not necessarily a vote against the idea because I want to pay people fairly, but I have not seen enough information.
And I want to clarify, I received this information today myself.
Fair enough.
Okay. We have a motion on the table, so all comments need to be directed to the motion in specific. Commissioner?
Well, I was going to say, do we have a motion and a second? Yes. I guess I would just have a question for Tina then. Is that what you suspect will happen then would be, how many mils did you say? Four? Three?
Well, six hundred thousand would be three mils.
Three mils? Is, I mean, is that, I mean, is there a no other way in the budget other than to go up three mils to do that? I mean, is that what you foresee would happen?
Well, we also have to consider that as we continue to move into the next year, valuations change. We had a really good commercial base build this year. And there's also other factors such as the hiring of the new staff for two thousand twenty-two. We're already fully aware that we won't be able to hire them as quickly as we thought we would. But by the time we get to budgeting for two thousand twenty-three, which won't be long from now, there will be other ways that we can evaluate and try find again, like we did this year, new revenue sources, extra areas where we can draw from and maybe create efficiencies and reduce costs. Because that's what we do every time in the budget, so I'm not saying that it'll be three mils because of this. I think there's a lot of things that we can work on.
Okay, thank you.
To Mr. Commissioner Jirdavich's point, the valuation of a mil this year was one hundred ninety-seven thousand?
Correct.
So there's his mathematics that it's a three-mil increase, just to clarify that for everyone.
But again, that, I'm sorry, Mayor, but again, that, you know, just Tina mentioned that depends upon valuations, and they're always going up. So
Yes, sir.
That today will not be most certainly what it is next year.
That is correct, too.
But we will do another pay increase next year that will probably eat up that additional.
We probably will, but here, but here's my point for making this, and I will not pull this one, is for the simple reason that we have our employees out there right now, their livelihood, wondering what they're going to get paid. This is important to people. And I'm not going to piss around, quite honestly, for another two weeks when I think the votes are here, let's just pass this thing and move on. I understand what you're saying, I respect what you're saying, but you do what you have to do.
I'm not necessarily opposed to it, I just would like, would have liked time to have seen the data to feel more comfortable with it. So that will be reflected in my.
I certainly respect that, Commissioner Jirdavich, absolutely.
Commission President Dartis and commissioners, please keep in mind when you're looking at the utilities, the eighty-nine thousand there, that does not go into mil levy, that comes from revenues and rates. So that doesn't go into the rest of it.
On the enterprise funds.
Correct.
Yes. That is, that is not part of the mils. Is there any further discussion?
To comment.
On the motion. Please, Commissioner Olson.
As a federal, former federal employee, I always disliked it to be a proper term, disliked it when the budgets were balanced on the backs of the employees. Because we were hit all the time with freezes and all that for many, many years. So I see the value of keeping our workforce here, and we've not moved up their salary in relation to other ones, so. Me, too. I would like to see more data, but I'm confident that we can do this.
I will share everything I have. We have a motion on the floor at four percent. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries on a four to one vote.
On behalf of the entire staff of the city of West Fargo, we thank you for your consideration. It's much appreciated.
Moving on to item number nine is the city administrator's report.
I'm back again. Okay. The first item also in front of you, in front of your computers, is the third quarterly, the third quarter update from the West Fargo Fire Department. And I'm just going to throw out a couple of numbers, and then if you have detailed questions, the chief is in the audience and he can respond to those. Their call volume is up eleven percent for the year, around one hundred and eighty-four more calls for service. This month will be the sixth consecutive month of two-hundred-plus calls, which is the first for them. Response times in the planning zone one are far below our goal of making the NFPA standards of ninety percent of the time. That's where the new station would go. Response times in planning zone three are beginning to slip specifically because the fire truck in that zone is being spread across the entire city. We had over thirty callbacks, we are, sorry, thirty callbacks over last year's total for the entire year with three months left in two thousand twenty-one. We'll be over by two hundred callbacks in December thirty-one. And what a callback means is we have to, they have to call staff back in that's already worked, and so we pull them in and pay them overtime and take them away from their rest. So with that, if you have detailed questions, Dan, is Chief Fuller is available?
Thank you, Mrs. Fisk. Commissioners, questions for Mrs. Fisk or Chief Fuller?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, the next thing I have is April fifth of this year, you approved a payment of twenty-five thousand dollars a year to the Greater Fargo Moorhead EDC contingent upon the city of Fargo paying a minimum of seventy-five thousand dollars. The confirmation that it's been approved by the city of Fargo, or Fargo, to pay seventy-five thousand dollars a year has been received by our economic development department. So I just wanted to inform you at this time that they've met all the requirements, and so we will pull the document and circulate it for signatures. so we will pull the document and circulate it for signatures.
Questions on that, anyone? Thank you.
The last item I have is Chief Otterness would like to give you an update.
Good evening, Chief. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Commission President Dardis and Commissioners. Just want to give you a brief update surrounding the events that started to unfold, I guess, early Sunday morning. You're all aware from updates from me and probably a lot of things you've seen in the media that we had another tragic situation impact our police department with Officer Tim Brown suffering a major heart attack at about 1:00 in the morning on Sunday morning. He collapsed at the Cass County Jail and was, lifesaving efforts, which I believe we will determine at some point were crucial by the Cass County Jail staff. Sheriff Johnner's employees were there within seconds performing lifesaving measures that I think impacted where we're at tonight. And so Officer Brown received some medical treatment, was stabilized here locally in town. Yesterday afternoon, he was flown to, through Lifelink down to Omaha, Nebraska, to the University of Nebraska Medical Center for some specialized care. That flight went well. Since the arrival in Omaha, Nebraska, the improvements are nothing short of a miracle. I think I can report to you tonight that his medical team is very optimistic. He has actually opened his eyes. He has started to breathe again on his own, which was not the case when we were at the hospital here in town. He's wiggling his toes. He's been able to apply pressure, squeezing people's hands bedside. All indications are really positive. They started to lower the oxygen levels with the ventilator that he's on. He's currently on a, a heart bypass machine, basically that is operating as his heart right now. But the hope is that at some point, the damage that was done medically will, he'll start to recover, that his own heart will start to, start to take some impact again and be able to function. So there's a very long road ahead. We have been receiving really timely updates on all of the progress from his family. They're in touch with me and some other staff members. Their family cannot even thank the City of West Fargo, the Commission, Commission President Dardis, Commissioner Simmons. You spent countless hours at the hospital with us. We appreciate that. I know the family appreciates that. They're overwhelmed by the response. And so I stand here tonight with some good news. I was able to share that good news with my staff today. It's the first bit of good news really related to this incident that I've been able to share all weekend. And so we're optimistic. We're very hopeful. We're thankful to the community. We've had an outpouring of support, the generosity. We've got a couple of different funding mechanisms in place to try to help the family now that they're trying to manage, you know, their time in Omaha, Nebraska as well as here locally. And so we've got GoFundMe pages set up through the West Fargo Police Officers Association. And also Bell Bank is taking donations through that same account, the West Fargo Police Association. And so we're, again, just want to tell you how appreciative we are of your support, the community's support, and just ask for continued prayers from our community and the Commission and for all of our staff. This is the second very traumatic incident that we've had within a short couple of months. So, and I'm open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Tina, any correspondence for this, this evening to share with us?
No, there is not. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any, Commissioners, are there any non-agenda items you'd like to bring forward this evening? Are any of the city department heads, is there any non-agenda item that you'd like to bring forward this evening? All right. Commissioner Simmons?
Motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Olson?